Ladies and gentlemen, get ready for the inaugural mayoral city council candidate forum 2023. Get seats, get your seats, and let's get started. All right, round of applause for Mackenzie. All right, I am Jonathan Singer. I am your master of ceremonies, if you couldn't tell by the red jacket already. I'm also the senior program policy person at the Boulder Chamber of Commerce. And to all of our candidates, all of our elected officials who are here, and to you, the audience, thank you so much for joining us tonight. This is the opening day of election season, and so we're proud to bring this event to you with all of our partners. But I want to say a special thank you, first of all, to Elevations Credit Union. They are the sponsor for this event. Thank you so much for helping us put on this event today. Next, and as you'll see, as our forum proceeds, we will have numerous partners here, including the Latino Chamber of Boulder County Community Cycles, Downtown Boulder Partnership, Bolo Realtors, the Community Foundation of Boulder, and the Boulder County Human Services Alliance. Let's thank them all for being here today and participating. The reason I listed those partners is because we understand at the Boulder Chamber that while we try our best to speak with one voice, it's truly an e pluribus unum, out of many voices, one. And out of these many voices, you'll hear many questions tonight for our council candidates. And before we go to that, I want to thank just a few other folks. I want to thank, first of all, the Boulder JCC and their wonderful AV staff. And I also want to thank a number of the folks here who have joined us from the Boulder Chamber. We've got some very illustrious folks here, but first of all, I thank you to some of the folks who are out there signing folks in right now. So to Maye, Courtney, Megan, thank you, and Erica, thank you all so much for holding it down for us, getting people into their seats on time, and getting us fed. A special thank you to our program policy specialist Devon Edgley as well for her amazing work in organizing this event. And I'll be introducing a couple of other special folks here who will be helping us stay on time, which we are not, but here we are. That's not their fault, that's mine. But we truly appreciate everyone in taking their time to come together for this. So with that being said, please join me in welcoming our first speaker tonight. As you may or may not know, this is the first year that we will have an opportunity to not only vote for city council, but vote for our mayor. And the significance of that is not lost on me, but what's even more interesting, thanks to you, the voters, is that the method of voting is going to be different as well. The method of voting is going to be through ranked choice voting, but rather than have me explain that to you, we have our communication specialist from the Boulder County Clerk's Office, Myrikla Wozniak. Why don't you come on up to the stage and regale us of this new method of voting?
Hello, everyone. How are you? So by show of hands, how many knew that this election was going to be a ranked choice voting? Oh, good. I think you're all of them in the city of Boulder. This is new, obviously. You guys all know. However, obviously, for voters, when they first voted on this, that was a lifetime ago. So it was back in 2020, as you may recall. This got first put forward to the voters. It passed overwhelmingly. I believe it was 78% voted in favor to elect their mayor directly in this manner. So and since then, our office, the Clerk and Recorder's Office, has been hard at work making this, hopefully successfully, happen for you guys this fall. So what that means is, when this first passed, there really wasn't a structure for our office, including our voting system to handle ranked choice voting. So we had to get to work, roll up our sleeves immediately, work with the state legislature in 2021 to pass legislation that directed the Secretary of State's office to take this on so that way there'd be rules in place and voting system guidelines, so that way we would have an adequate voting system that is capable of conducting this election for the residents and voters of the city of Boulder. So we will be the first on a modern voting system. I know there has been a few ranked choice voting elections by hand in Colorado and many, apparently many, maybe 50-plus years ago potentially in the city of Boulder. I'm not entirely sure on the history, but I have heard from some of the legal wing voters that there has been a history, but this is the first one conducted that will be conducted for Coloradans on a modern voting system. So we're really excited to be a part of this and be the first to go forward. So I know I just have a couple of minutes, so the main thing I want people to take away is when you get your mail ballot packet and that comes in the mail, city of Boulder voters, I hope you are all familiar with these blue instructions, and I hope they're retained every time, because they're all updated. Sometimes there are little changes, minor, but please hold on to these. Don't just toss them when you get them. These are really important. And then, secondarily, city of Boulder voters will get this green insert. There is Spanish on the back, and this is really important. This is going to outline how you're to vote on your ranked choice ballot for this mayoral contest. And I believe there are four candidates officially. Yeah, that I believe is the certification happened, I believe, yesterday. Then it comes to our office. We have a tight timeline to turn around, lay out the ballot, do all that work, because military and overseas ballots go out mid-September, if you weren't aware. So this is the insert that will come in your ballot packet. Please hold on to it. It outlines the key details. Basically, a ranked choice election contest, when you vote on it, instead of voting for just one candidate, you get to rank in preference your order for mayor for this contest. So the candidates will be on one side, your preference on the other. And the important thing is just to follow the direction, that you basically can only vote for one preference per column, so one for first, one for second, and so on. You don't necessarily have to rank all your candidates if you don't want to rank everyone, but the important points are only one per ranking, and then so that way you don't vote two people for first choice or second choice, and then also not skipping rankings and things of that nature. But this goes, this insert basically covers all those ground rules. And also, if you do make a mistake, you follow the same directions that you would on here on how to correct a mistake if you don't have time to get a new ballot. Our preference is always to get a new ballot because it helps with processing time. So I believe those are the basics. It's going to be really exciting. This ranked choice voting election touches every facet that our office conducts. So we've had a full-time project manager on this since the beginning of this year, managing all those pieces, how this impacts ballot processing, ballot design. We implemented a new voting system to manage this, testing of that voting system, communications, and so on. So if you're interested in seeing this, the pre-testing of ballots and equipment usually happens the first week of October, and that's open to the public. It is during the weekday, but it is open to anyone who wants to observe it, and that'll be the first time people are testing voting and running it through our voting system equipment in that process. And then, obviously, there'll be a post-election audit, and this is also part of that audit as well. So I don't know if I have a moment to take questions, or if you just want to field me questions?
No, sadly, we don't have time for questions, but I want to say, first of all, you'll stick around for a couple of minutes, right?
Sure, happy to hang on the side.
So stick around, and we're going to go, we're going to go straight into our next part of our program now, but thank you for putting the "ah" in "audit." And a special thank you to our county clerk's office. For those of you who don't know, Boulder County has some of the highest turnout in the nation, and so give yourselves a round of applause. So in the spirit of a few thank yous, we'll wait for the screen to come up here. In the spirit of a few thank yous, you know, we talk about ranked choice voting. You know, there's a few people and individuals who rank above and beyond, though, and so I wanted to say a special thank you to two presidents and CEOs. First of all, Jerry Agnes from Elevations Credit Union, if you're here, if you want to wave to the crowd, thank you so much. In no particular order, but obviously, number one in the Boulder Chamber's heart, John Tare, president and CEO. So once again, thank you all for being here. We're going to go through a number of topics tonight. They'll range from the minimum wage to public safety, the permitting process. Okay, we gotta watch for the plosives, candidates. Affordable housing, downtown Boulder, special districts, public spaces, and workforce development. Now, we have two very important folks, arguably the most important folks in the room right now. And I'm not talking about myself. I am talking about Darcy and Kate, because Darcy and Kate are going to be our timekeepers. So the great news here is that we've got a giant yellow sign that will let our candidates know when 30 seconds have elapsed. Let's give that 30-second warning a quick... All right, so 30-second warning. We're going to bring that home for my wife later on. And the next one is for me. She's... Wrap it up. That's what I hear. Tell me about your day, but wrap it up. And with the next one, why don't you raise that up just a little bit higher? And in case the speaker keeps going, there will be a special signifying chime. All right, and if that doesn't work, the chime just gets thrown at the individual speaker. So everyone keep their ears peeled, and everyone remember? You know, I hear those chimes, and I think of those film strips that we all used to have. Turn the page. That's right, turn to the next candidate. So with that being said, I want to invite all of our candidates to join us up here on the stage at this moment. So and feel free to give them a round of applause. We've got assigned seating, folks. Assigned seating in alphabetical order. So if we've given them assigned seating, there will be no musical chairs today. All right, so in the spirit of time, I was going to read bios for each of the candidates, but what we're going to do in replacement of that is I'm going to introduce each of them by name. And then, what I'm going to ask for, as they're providing their responses to our questions, that you hold your applause or boos, but I'm guessing mostly applause. I'm going to ask that you hold your applause, except for this one exception, after I read their names. So please join me in welcoming council candidates Taisha Adams, Silas Atkins, Terry Burnchich, Jacques De Calo, Wayland Lewis, Tina Marquess, Aaron Nyer, Jennifer Robbins, Ryan Schuhardt, Tara Weiner, Aaron Brockett, Nicole Spear, Paul Tweedley, and Bob Yates. We know, I can tell you as a former candidate, that it is never easy going up in front of a crowd and putting your heart and soul into something, so my applause and my thanks to each of you as well. So this is the way it works. We are going to be taking selfies. No, this is, if you didn't take a picture, it didn't happen. Now, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be asking a round of questions. We have chosen candidates at random through two baskets here to respond to each of these questions, because we will not have time for every candidate to answer every question. But what we're going to do is bring up candidates two by two, two council candidates, two mayoral candidates. Like I said, chosen at random by these, from these illustrious baskets. So we're going to open with this. For Paul and Aaron Brockett and Jacques De Calo. We're going to do introductions first. Can you tell that I'm nervous? But we're going to cue this up for the next question here. So Jacques and Terry, and then Paul and Aaron Brockett. But first, what we're going to go to is introductions. We've given you each one minute to tell us a little bit about who you are, why you're running, and why you love Boulder.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Taisha Adams. I am an educator, environmentalist, and social justice advocate who's lived in Boulder for 11 years. I feel like we are in a polycrisis of climate, culture, and community affordability, and I believe that I bring the expertise around climate resilience, around social justice, being on the Boulder Police Oversight Panel, and most recently, rolling off the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Commission. I am ready for this moment, and most importantly, I'm ready to work in collaboration with federal council, community, and business to meet the incredible demands that are at our doorstep. And by culture, I mean the calls for book bans. By climate, I mean wildfire and floods. These are issues that continue to escalate, and no policy in and of itself alone will be enough. People do work, and it's the quality of our relationships that will determine the quality of our response. Thank you.
All right, you already broke the rules, folks. We're going to assume that we can clap for everyone also. I'll ask if the candidates wouldn't mind standing up for the cameras so they can be able to differentiate. So Silas, take it away.
Hello, my name is Silas Atkins. I am a resident of Boulder. I've been for seven years. I'm a single parent, and I work at a school. I make very minimal money, so I'm running on council to make things better for people like myself who are struggling to survive here in Boulder. At least 25% of Boulder residents are below poverty wage, and I don't find that acceptable at all, because we are a city that can come together and make that better. I'm here to work on housing, transportation, arts and culture, wages, and the environment, because all of those things help us be more climate resilient when we work on them together. Thank you very much.
Hi there. First, I want to address the elephant in the room. My name is pronounced Burnchich. It's Croatian, and yes, I would like to buy a vowel. I moved here nine years ago from San Francisco after a 25-year career in finance and accounting. I was motivated to run for council through my involvement with Safe Zones for Kids. In my work on Safe Zones, I had the opportunity to look under the hood of our city government, and what I found was a little bit concerning. We have a lot of challenges that we're facing here in Boulder, particularly around homelessness, housing, and public safety, and many of our leaders are more focused on ideological arguments rather than sensible and effective results. I believe that we need leaders that are willing to prioritize collaborative and responsible decision-making, and that will actually engage our community in solutions. I am running because I have a background as a CFO, and I believe that I can bring a data-driven and results-oriented perspective with a focus on accountability. Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Jacques De Calo. I was born and raised in Boulder. I played sports across most of the parks in Boulder, Martin Park, Stazio, Pleasant View. I went to Mesa, Southern Hills, and Fairview. I bring a perspective from how Boulder has changed over the last 20-some years. Some of you may recognize me from two years ago, where I ran on a straight environmental platform, just bringing ideas forward that I believe would make Boulder more sustainable. Since then, I've learned more and incorporated more into my platform, such as permanently affordable housing, public safety, encouraging clean energy, and pushing for a sustainable environment for all. I understand that our community has concerns over good governments, and I promise to increase dialogue between our community and bring forward a perspective that includes all voices, not just those who choose to be present in our government. I thank the chamber for hosting this event, and I look forward to answering your questions. Thank you.
Jacques stole about half of what I was going to say. I'm from Boulder. I went to Wood Ear and Mapleton. I'll skip the rest. Can you see? So my name is Wayland Lewis. I'm the founder of Elephant Journal. It's a business, which I thought I would mention. It's been going for 22 years. So I've balanced budgets with responsibility for those who work for me with good benefits, making sure they're taken care of. I've known their families. It's still going, and it does provide me the ability to run and serve, finally. I'm very excited about that. To Silas's point, I'd love to see city council be more equitable so those who weren't in a workaholic position or retired or whatever could serve. I'm very inspired about climate change, which is not something everyone says all the time. It's a very difficult issue, but fire mitigation to begin with. We will be a target for martial fires again and again. That applies to floods, homelessness, public safety. We can make progress, and affordability, we can make more. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Tina Marquess, and I am a mom of two kids here in Boulder. We've been here for over 20 years raising our kids. I first got involved in the schools at Foothill Elementary, and then decided to run for school board. I ran because I was concerned about the achievement and opportunity gaps in our community and how kids had a lot of different resources helping them succeed. Through that experience, I became aware of a lot of other issues facing our community, including affordable housing, especially for teachers, parents, educators, bus drivers, as well as the sense of security around Boulder High as we deal with our unhoused, our homeless population, and look to find solutions. I'm running for city council to continue serving our community. I've been off the school board for two years, and I've rested after the pandemic, and I'd love to help find solutions for the community. Thanks.
Hey, my name's Aaron Nyer. I have a background in technology. I've worked at Google as a software engineer, and I also hold a master's degree in ecopsychology from Eropa. I'm running on a platform of regeneration, and what that means to me is applying mindfulness and living systems principles to how we do Boulder governance. So of course, regeneration is a land perspective. I really care about restoring biodiversity, but to me, it's a much more integral perspective of how we address problems in our community. We need a more diverse community, which means creating a more welcoming community. We really need a more efficient government and more effective structure, so we need infrastructure that's going to support addressing the climate crisis in an effective way while still keeping Boulder affordable, and we need to level up our technology within governance so we can actually move efficiently on a lot of processes, which is going to support people living in Boulder, support businesses growing in Boulder. And I think what it all comes down to for me is communication. We need to have healthier relationships with our community, healthier engagement, as well as with our neighbors, so that we can really address these systemic problems together. So thank you.
Hello, my name is Jenny Robbins. I've lived here in Boulder for seven years. I have two daughters who are 11 and 13. If you're wondering about my backbone, I have two tween girls, so it's pretty, it's pretty strong at this point. In addition to that, I also have been shuttling 28 Girl Scouts for the last six years through adolescents. And what I have found with those girls is that we have youth that are really hungry for leadership. We have kids that are really struggling. They've been through fires, pandemic, a lot of catastrophes. They have a little hopelessness happening right now, and it's really important to make sure that we advocate for our youth and our families. My husband has a small business here in Boulder. I'm a passionate advocate for arts, small business, safety, and the environment. I started running for council because I think there should be more youth opportunities, as well as the current council, I believe, needs, should have done more, and we can do more on environment and affordable housing issues. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Schuhardt. Pronouns are he/him. I am originally from Southern Oregon, where I grew up working a cash register from the age that I had to stand on a bar stool in my parents' small business. Today, I'm the dad of two small girls, who I moved with, along with my wife, to Boulder to live in a carlight lifestyle near the mountains. In my day job, I am a professional advocate and advisor for climate action, something I've been doing since 2007, soon after I discovered or was awakened to the climate crisis as a Peace Corps volunteer. I want to help Boulder become stronger in three ways. Affordability, this is mostly about transportation and housing. Number two, safety, we need to be more proactive about investing in preventative measures and critical services across the many threats that are coming at us. And third, inclusion, we need to do a better job of making sure that everybody can participate in daily life in Boulder and also in our public processes. So affordability, safety, inclusion, these are three things that are going to make Boulder stronger. They're also going to unlock climate action and do so in a way that's good for business and is going to help bar economy grow. Thanks very much.
I need one more hand here. I'm Tara Weiner, and I'm on city council, see the badge, and I'm running for reelection. Hold on. All right. Rachel, am I allowed to have two badges, or is it...? Okay, you don't know. All right. I moved to Boulder 12 years ago with my family from Philly, and I've never looked back, except that I miss my favorite Thai restaurant. I'm not going to lie. It took me one year to know anything, to know anything on council, and then it took me another year to really grasp the issues. The learning curve is crazy. Land use, zoning, call-up, budget, mouse care. Ask me about that later. Remember the mouse in city council? Okay. Any decision needs five votes, me and four others. So my relationships with my colleagues is very important to me, and my relationship with you is very important to me and with staff. Relationships are, I repeat, very important. These are the things I'm going to focus on, and that I have focused on. Lighting and underpasses, protected bike lanes, safe public spaces, small businesses, decreasing crime, options for people suffering with mental health and drug addiction, and of course, affordable housing.
All right, and we're going to go in alphabetical order, even though we have Nicole lined up first. But Aaron, we're going to hear from you first, then we'll go to Nicole. So take it away, Aaron.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's wonderful to be here with you. My name is Aaron Brockett. I've been on the Boulder City Council for eight years, and I've been your mayor for the last two. I live in North Boulder with my wife and my two kids. And in my eight years on city council, I'm proud of a lot of what we've accomplished, including passing sanctuary city ordinances, passing a suite of gun violence prevention measures, including an assault weapons ban, creating hundreds of units of affordable housing, upping our support for the arts and for social services funding. We've gotten a lot of really great stuff done, but there's a lot more to do. And as part of my playing this role, I have been out in the community all the time. I go to nonprofits. I go out to support our small businesses. I speak at events. I've spoken from the stage probably five times in the last couple of years, and I've built the regional relationships that can help us tackle our problems collaboratively, because we've got big issues out there, and we can only deal with them when we work together. So if you'll support me for mayor this fall, I'll keep going out there and doing that work for you each and every day. Thank you so much.
All right, Nicole.
Can everyone still hear me okay?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. All right, let's start my timer. Thank you to the chamber and the JCC for hosting us, to everyone who made time to be here, and to Devon Edgley for helping me join remotely while I'm home with COVID. I'm Dr. Nicole Spear. I'm a mom, a scientist, a businesswoman, and a current city councilwoman, and I'm also running to be Boulder's first elected mayor. We've made progress addressing the challenges of the past few years, but I know that many of you and our business community are still struggling. And our memories of the businesses and nonprofits who've closed their doors since we were here two years ago tell us we still have more work to do. We'll talk tonight about how our city's high housing costs, lack of affordable childcare, and shrinking workforce make it harder to recruit and retain staff, and how permitting delays, unclear application processes, and an overly regulated environment make it hard to adapt to quickly changing circumstances. I hope we'll also talk about our many strengths, our innovative and collaborative business and nonprofit community, our dedicated city staff, and our world-class workers. Because what I love about our city is that every time we commit to working together, our challenges become opportunities. Thanks.
Thank you, Nicole, first of all, for keeping us safe and also holding to your time there. All right, next up, Paul.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. I've printed out my bio here, but it's, unfortunately, it's very wee writing. My name is Paul Tweedley, and I've lived in Boulder in Fourth Street for 20 years. I'm a software engineer, and I have 35 years of experience developing 3D design, simulation, and manufacturing systems, mainly for the aerospace industry. I have one son who recently graduated from CU. I attend the Sacred Heart of Jesus Church.
Last but not least, Bob.
Hi, my name is Bob Yates. I've served on Boulder City Council for the last eight years. In a few minutes, you're going to hear a whole bunch of answers to questions, some of which you're going to agree with, some which you'll disagree with, some of which you won't understand. But I think one thing that makes me different from, from my colleagues on council and from maybe some of the people behind me right now is I like to communicate. I like to communicate with you. I like to listen to what you have to say. I like to share with you what council's about to do. And when I vote, I like to explain to you what I was thinking, why did I do what I was, what I did. How many of you here get my newsletter? A lot of you do. On Monday, it'll be 84 issues, 84th monthly issue. I believe that the number one duty of the elected official is to listen to his or her constituents, to communicate with his or her constituents. You may agree with some of my votes, you may disagree with some of my votes, but the thing that you're always going to know is I've listened to you and I've made the best decision I can based upon what you told me. Thank you.
Well, I was hoping for a Rhode Island accent, but I'll, I'll accept Scotland today. So, all right, with that, we're going to go into our first question. Once again, this question is going to go to Aaron Brockett and Paul Tweedley and Terry Bernicich and Jacques De Calo. This comes from the Boulder Chamber. Residents and businesses are deeply concerned about criminal activity impacting property and the sense of personal safety. What measures would you propose for addressing these concerns about crime in our community? We'll start with Paul.
Good question. I'm sure you're all aware there was stabbing on the, just at the library there. It's funny, I was going into the municipal office there to get my signatures and there was a Fox 13 news cameraman there speaking to me. He said, yeah, it happened right here, just on the bridge. You know that white bridge that goes over there? It looks a bit over-engineered, but that's where the stabbing was. I mean, that's right in the corridor from, you know, university coming down to the, you know, the businesses downtown. And it's like, what are we going to do about it? I mean, what's, what is city council going to do about it? I mean, we need to have people respect the law. How do we do that? I think you do it in small stages, you know? If it's a misdemeanor, you get a ticket. If you don't pay your ticket, you're going to jail. And we're building that. Thank you.
Aaron.
You know, this is an important issue, right? We hear from business owners downtown and from people around town concerned about this all the time. So we have to make progress on this issue. It's an important issue. So we do have some new resources coming online. We've been expanding the very successful downtown Boulder ambassador program and we're moving that up to the Hill as well. We've added urban park rangers to assist with this, these issues as well. And something I'm very excited about is an initiative that I've championed to bring a non-police-based emergency response system online, which will help with the lower-level behavioral health issues that we see because a lot of the, the issues we see out there in the community don't require an armed officer. But some of them do and it's important that we support our police department. I've been at the last two police graduations. There's been an amazing diversity of ages, backgrounds, and experiences. We've got a lot of new people coming online who'll be able, and that will give the police department the time and the resources needed to tackle some of these bigger crimes, some of the bigger problems that we're facing. So with these new resources that we've got coming, I'm confident we can make, we can and will make a real difference in this area. Thank you.
We'll go to Jacques next and then Terry.
Thank you. I'd like to start off in saying that I'm impressed with the progress our police department has made in the chief of police to staff her department. They've instituted prevention and problem-solving approaches that engage with community members to find solutions that fit these businesses. Of course, there are areas that still need improvement, such as the creek and the issues that come with the people experiencing homelessness down there. We need to work to target these main areas of impact and find preventative measures that all of the community can have access to, to see where these areas are and bring their solutions forward. I personally believe that much of our city is incredibly safe. However, you know, there are acts of vandalism. I've picked up needles at the creek. I've seen broken glass and I've seen the things that all of us in this room have seen that are making us feel that our city isn't necessarily, necessarily as safe as it actually is. I believe that we need to just continue the dialogue and community input. Thank you.
Everyone has a right to feel safe in their community and it's not unkind to say so. Our downtown businesses are experiencing, you know, crime and being victimized. We have our bikes being stolen. We've got open-air drug use happening and violence in our streets. We need to stop this cycle of crime. We need to work with our criminal justice system to make sure that there are meaningful consequences for criminal behavior. In particular, we need our community court to stop the practice of dismissing tickets with five, 10, 30 offenses. We need alternative sentencing that will get these individuals the help that they need and get them off the street. And similarly, we need to revise our bail policies. Individuals that are committing violent crime and have a history of not showing up for court need to be given a bail that is high enough to ensure that they're in custody or at least incentivized to come back and be in court so that they can be held accountable for their crimes. Thank you.
All right. Next to individuals, I'll start with a question here. So I want to introduce our first partner tonight. This is Melanie Ricci representing the Downtown Boulder Partnership. So why don't we launch with your question and then we'll go to our next two or four speakers here.
Thank you very much. Okay. Candidates, how do you envision the city supporting safe and managed public spaces specifically throughout the downtown area?
All right, we'll start with Bob Yates and Nicole Spear and then we'll go to Aaron Nyer and Wayland Lewis. So start with Bob Yates.
Eight answers. Number one, permanent supportive housing. Number two, treatment for mental health and substance abuse. Number three, open our night shelter to the point where people understand their empty beds there every night. Number four, open a day shelter. We don't have one of those in town. Number five, enforce our camping ban. We need to have our police and our lawyers backing up the enforcement of our actual laws. Number six, clean up encampments as they occur. We need to increase the size of our cleanup crew. Number seven, there needs to be consequences for crime. We have people who have 50, 60, 80 violations. They don't go to jail. That's not right. Eight, out of eight, transients. Do you know that 50% of the homeless people you see out there on the street have been in Boulder for less than one month? Do you know that on an average day in Boulder, Colorado, four new homeless people show up in town? They stay here for an average of 1.3 months and they go on to the next town. That needs to stop. We need to help them get on the way to the next destination. Thank you.
Next, next up is Nicole Spear, who you do not have to hand the microphone to you. Nicole.
Easy that way. Hold on, let me get my timer started. Okay. Yeah, thank you for this question. You know, I think we've been doing the Safe and Managed Public Spaces program for a couple of years now. Started back in 2021, we have been investing around $3 million a year in this program. And one of the issues that we're seeing is even this past year, as we're doubling the capacity of our encampment cleanup, it's not really having the impact that we would like it to have in terms of having people not trying to live in our public spaces. It's absolutely not acceptable that people are trying to live in our public spaces. It's not a good idea for anyone, certainly not helpful for those who are downtown, living and working. But I would ask us to look at what we've been doing and see if it's having the outcomes that we are wanting to see and decide from there whether or not we want to keep going with the same approach that we've been doing that doesn't seem to be working or invest more in some of these new approaches like a day services center, now health first responders and other things we know work. Thank you.
All right, now we'll go to our council candidates. We'll start with Aaron Nyer.
Yeah, so I think agreeing with like a lot of, a lot of these points that are already made, I think the first thing we have to do is create safer spaces for people to go. Like, yes, as has been said, we do not want a bunch of people living in public spaces and we need to have some level of enforcement that ensures that these spaces remain available for everybody to use. Like, they're common spaces for a reason and it's not, it's not fair to the general populace if there's like constant encampments there. And yeah, we need to look at what's actually going to effectively move us in the direction. I don't think constant enforcement, like boom, 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 is going to, it, it just, it does just shuffle it around, but we do need some level of enforcement. So I think some level of enforcement that prioritizes mental health outreach and prioritizes day shelter, night shelter, prioritizes services, prioritizes more public restrooms and things to keep the area clean, to ensure the area stays clean, and then use enforcement only when it's necessary. Thank you.
Wayland.
So I'm a fan of a lot of the people on this stage. A lot of the people on this stage, however, want to throw good money after bad. We have not made progress on the homeless or public safety issue in the way we could have if we were working together. Bob said the other day at a plan forum that there's really two councils and I think that's accurate. I would love to be a part as an independent candidate with a lot of endorsements, a lot of support from both sides, a phrase ruined by Donald, to actually make some progress. I agree with a lot of what's on, on Bob just recounted and Nicole. We actually need to get it done. We need to not only support enforcement, but actually follow through. We've kind of tied the hands of the police, throwing more money at the problem isn't enough. As Nicole said, we need to have a good policy. There needs to be a place for them to go. Transitional campground, day shelter, other things have been mentioned. If we're just paying to move them two blocks at a time, we're going to continue to ruin the creek path, our sense of public safety, which I loved growing up with, and that's it.
All right. All right. Thank you, Melanie. We're going to move on now to the Boulder Realtors with Brett. Brett, feel free to ask your question.
Boulder has a stark shortage of housing inventory and housing needs are at an all-time high. Rent control has come up as a potential solution. However, multiple studies demonstrate that rent control doesn't work. Rather, it creates negative outcomes for both landlords and renters. What is your position on rent control?
All right, and now we're going to mix it up a little bit. We're going to go with city council first and then our mayoral candidates. So we have Taisha Adams and Ryan Schuhart.
Thank you. So do I support bad policy that did not result in the outcomes that we've desired? No, I do not. Rent control has not led to the outcomes we've desired, but rent stabilization has created pathways. Also, there are other ways that we can ensure and support stability, including rental assistance, which we already have programs that are over demand. Right now, we have a organizations in our community that are filling the gap, filling gaps, including rental assistance. And so therefore, although I don't agree with continuing bad policy, I do agree on the urgency of addressing the acute needs faced by many in our community right now. 350 was the number of families needing assistance pre-pandemic every week and that number is now at 600 every week. The systems we have in play are not working. We need new ones. Thank you.
Ryan.
This is a question about affordability. Half of Boulder residents pay nearly half of their budget for transportation and housing. It's grossly unaffordable and it's a reason why our city is depopulating, why our school district enrollment is declining, and why traffic is getting worse, not better. It's also the, the result of deliberate planning that is making it expensive to, to consume energy and space, or it's forcing us to overconsume energy and space. And this, of course, has cascading environmental effects. We can do better. We need to align our planning with our values and goals that allow more people to have more kinds of housing, in middle housing, meaning townhomes, cottage courts, triplexes, duplexes, ADUs. And we need to reform parking to, to make it so that we can build housing instead of having water, water flowing over concrete when, when we need natural space. I have a list of things here. We just got these questions yesterday. I don't know if people realize this, and I was at another plan forum with my colleagues here. So I've got a list that I'll submit in writing, but I'd also point out that more generally, affordable housing fees should be tied to the price of market-based housing. And I guess you'll have to stay tuned for the written comments for the rest.
All right. Always, always leave the audience wanting more. So speaking of more, we're going to go to our council candidates. We'll start with Nicole and go to Bob.
Mayor candidates.
Excuse me, mayor candidates who happen to both be on city council right now. All right, so.
Okay. So I will say there's no one solution to our housing crisis. Fundamentally, I believe that basic human needs like safe shelter, clean air and water, healthy food, childcare and healthcare should be available and accessible to everybody. Rent control seems to have different outcomes depending on the background of the person that you're talking to. It does seem to help the people who are in the rent-controlled units, but it does not kind of solve what, what is in our area, regional affordability crisis because there, there just isn't one solution to our housing crisis. And it's going to take a balance of a lot of different approaches to get us to a place where we have affordable housing for our residents and workers. This council has really been coming together a lot around issues of housing. We've been working on land use changes, zoning changes, occupancy changes, changes to our inclusive, inclusionary housing policies. All the things that this council has been doing will help prevent housing prices from increasing as fast as they would have over the coming decades. But to address affordability right now, we need to be looking at minimum wage and basic needs assistance. Thank you.
Bob.
My wife tells me I need to slow down, so I'm going to talk much more slowly on this answer. I rattled through eight solutions to homelessness. Try, try solving homelessness in 60 seconds. It's tough. All those eight are going to be laid out in my newsletter on Monday, so you'll see them. You can read them at your leisure on Labor Day. Rent control. Thank you for asking the question. The answer is no, I'm not in favor of rent control. We've heard lots and lots of reasons why it doesn't make sense. Conversion to condos, bad behavior by landlords, less housing actually being built rather than more housing. What are the two big cities that have rent control? San Francisco and New York. Hmm, not the cheapest cities in the world. Is it working? I don't think so. I'm not in favor of rent control. Fortunately, the state has prohibited us from having rent control here in Boulder, so we don't have to deal with it. But if the state ever changes that rule, I would be voting against it. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Boulder community, or excuse me, is next up is our Human Services Alliance, which I think is, is me because they were not able to be here today. So please pretend that I'm Matt Eldred for the, for the moment here. So Matt with the Human Services Alliance asks, Boulder County Commissioners recently turned down an opportunity to create an early childhood special ed district, special education district, which would, excuse me, I'm going to repeat that. It's a special district for early childhood, early childhood special district, which would have generated roughly $60 million a year through a mill levy tax for Boulder County residents. If elected, what would you do to promote new substantial sources of revenue to support children and families with affordable and accessible early childhood education needs and significantly support, and support a significantly underpaid and predominantly female workforce? If the folks in the audience think that was a very long question, you are correct. However, all of these questions were sent to our candidates ahead of time. For those of you who will not hear from them on this specific question, we will be posting their responses on our website later, along with that very long question. So with that, we'll start with our mayoral candidates. We'll do Aaron and Paul. And for our city council, we'll do Tara and Tina. So let's start with Aaron.
Yes, this is a great question. I was disappointed about that outcome. I thought that special district had real promise. I remember talking to Matt Eldred about this at a, actually an event for Junie Joseph, who are our state representatives, who's in the House, and talking about how promising that would be. The need is so great for childcare in our community and fortunately, the state passed a universal preschool rule, but unfortunately, the rollout has been going very poorly. So we're collaborating with our partners at the school district to assist them however we can. And the city is, also has childcare subsidies available and we deserve to do more of those. I can't claim that we're going to find $60 million in another pocket, but I hope this comes back and I hope that the county commissioners will take another look at this again because it's critical for the needs of our workforce, often for, particularly for single parents, single moms. And fortunately, the state passed a universal preschool rule, but unfortunately, the rollout has been going very poorly. So we're collaborating with our partners at the school district to assist them however we can. And the city is, also has childcare subsidies available, and we deserve to do more of those. I can't claim that we're going to find $60 million in another pocket, but I hope this comes back, and I hope that the county commissioners will take another look at this again, because it's critical for the needs of our workforce, often for particularly for single parents, single moms. You need reliable childcare. There are few things that stand as barriers to people who are trying to get out of a lower income situation than a lack of access to childcare. So it's a critically important problem. We've got to keep working on. Thank you.
Paul.
Excuse me. Children are our most precious, precious resource. Well, I agree in that. What can we do to help our communities, help our children, help human services, help our schools? You know, there's no easy answer. Some things I have been looking at, not that I have a child, my child is 25, like I said, but one thing I was looking at is like homeschooling. There's a lot of interest. I think like 5% of the families that are doing homeschool in the states, and also there's other resources in your neighborhood. Like there's people in this room that have talents that would be prepared, they're retired, and they maybe want to go and help homeschool children. You may not believe it, but I used to teach piano. You don't believe that?
All right, next up Tara.
I'm going down memory lane because ever since I was, I don't know, 22, I've been working. And when I had my kids, I was in a big panic because I didn't know what I was going to do. I had the resources though. I had money that I could afford to pay for childcare, and I had my, my mom and my dad living near us. An awful lot of people do not have that. I know my kids right now are struggling. They have, they have huge costs for childcare, which they can afford, and they also depend on me, which is why I'm stressed out all the time. So I will say there's plenty of people in this city that have nobody to help, that don't have enough money. I think I've, EFA says childcare is one of the biggest problems for people succeeding, and we need to help people succeed, all people, especially people of lower income who cannot afford childcare. We need to make a way to make it work. I agree, Erin. We need to really push those county commissioners to help us. And I'm hoping that we can do something as well as a city and really attack this coming up. It's like a number one most important issue.
All right, Tina.
Hi. So on the childcare tax, I personally did not support that tax. The structure of it crossed Weld County and Boulder County, but didn't include Broomfield County. So there was an alignment with the BVSD and St. Rain School Districts. And it also created another layer on top of the school districts, the Early Childhood Council, and also the preschool board that was formed at the state level. So it added a layer of complexity. But unfortunately, we didn't get the desperately needed money to help our families who need childcare. So I would support a city tax that would provide childcare with our city that's more manageable. I would also conduct massive stakeholding with the different childcare providers, as well as the Boulder Valley School District, to make sure that we have buy-in and we can appropriately support the providers, and also look at how the BVSD has created living wages for its preschool teachers. So they're the best paid preschool teachers, except maybe the JCC, which is awesome too. So that's what I would support.
All right. Moving on from Human Services Alliance to the Latino Chamber of Commerce of Boulder County, Jonathan Galindo, if you want to take it away.
How do you plan to promote economic growth and job opportunities specifically within the Latino community, including support for Latino owned businesses?
All right. And with this, we will start with Silas Atkins and Jennifer Robbins, and Ms. Cole Spear and Bob Yates. So let's, Silas, since you have the microphone, we'll go with you.
I believe that when we, when we need to start with this, is that we need to start with housing, livable wages, universal basic income, robust transportation networks, arts and culture, and a feeling of safety. That's my answer for almost everything that I've been asked, because I believe it's the core foundation of how we get to where we need to be. When we have what we need and we feel safe, we can contribute to the greater community. We can work better. We can live better, and we can provide something that is beautiful to all of us, which is a welcoming community. Thank you very much.
Jennifer.
Hello. I wanted to start by saying that I think that equity is one of the most important things that we should look at as a city. Equity fosters people feeling safe where they live. It fosters people being treated fairly, and we need to support that through our programs within the city of Boulder. To do that, I think what we can do is we can work with the Latino community to, work with the Latino Chamber of Commerce, foster job preparation. We can foster bank partnerships. We can really listen to the voices that we can hear. I think that getting people involved into the conversations as much as we can is, is a very important part of making sure that people feel equity and feel equal in our city. Thanks.
We'll go to Bob, then Nicole.
I'm proud of our Latino businesses here in Boulder and Boulder County. They are the backbone of our community. But we need to do more to celebrate the successes of the Latino community and the Latino businesses. We need to hold up successes in the Latino business community as role models for youth. The city has a Youth Opportunities Advisory Board where we appoint young high school students to serve and advise council, and many of those are Latinos. And we need to continue to provide those opportunities for Latinos to then grow up and be successful, family members and successful business members here in our community. And we need to support and celebrate those businesses that have done very, very well, so that other Latinos see the success of those businesses and know that they too can achieve here in our diverse and welcoming community. Thank you.
All right, Nicole.
Tenemos un grupo maravilloso que apoya a las empresas latinas y a la comunidad latina, la cámara de comercio latina. Soy miembro de este grupo. Así que yo sé que tiene eventos educativos y sociales para apoyar a las empresas latinas que atienden las necesidades de la comunidad latina. Las empresas latinas saben mejor lo que necesita la comunidad latina. We have a wonderful group that supports Latino businesses and the Latino community, the Latino Chamber of Commerce. I'm a member of this group, so I know they have educational and social events to support Latino businesses that serve the needs of the Latino community. Latino companies know best what the Latino community needs. Roberto Cabrera is a local Latino business owner who has a company called My Wealth Being. It's a financial advising and management company that started almost two years ago, provides education tools, strategies, and consultations to help create wealth for participants. It's a wonderful example of how people in the Latino community are already addressing this issue and supporting their work can help.
Thank you, Jonathan, and the Latino Chamber. And so next up, Bob.
I can say it again.
All right. It was so great that I wanted to hear it again. All right. Moving on to the other side of Rachel Friend with Community Cycles. You may remember her on this side of the stage. Thank you for joining us on, on this side of the stage today with Community Cycles.
Thanks, Jonathan. Bob, don't, don't be offended by him forgetting your answer there. That was bad. Okay. My question is straightforward. Protected bike lanes are a current priority for Boulder City Council. Do you support protected bike lanes going forward? Please explain your response.
All right. And for that, we will take council candidates Silas Atkins and Terry Burntich, and then we'll do Paul Tweedley and Erin Brockett. So let's start with Terry.
Boulder is a biking town, and we definitely want to do everything we can to keep, keep people out of their cars and on their bikes. I am strongly in support of protected bike lanes, especially in the key commute corridors. You know, we really need to encourage as much, as much eco-friendly travel as possible. And I think giving especially families the reassurance to know that they can get from point A to point B without any, you know, severe traffic issues is very, very important to get people on their bikes. The other thing, even though it's not part of protected bike lanes, but I think as important is the multi-use paths. They are connectors between our protected bike lanes and really important for commuting. And I think we need to do more around our policies specifically there, keeping them clean, but also really having some new policies around e-bikes on our paths and making sure that we have infrastructure and policies that will ensure that people use e-bike safely and also can do that alongside our pedestrians and our regular bike transit. Thanks.
Thank you. This is a great question. Yes, I am fully support protected bike lanes. Data shows that separating modes of travel and using a road diet to reduce car lanes makes all modes of travel safer, including reducing car to car crashes by up to 60%. This comes back to what I said earlier about a feeling of safety. We've talked about safety in many contexts. However, we need to really think about safety in all areas, all parts of Boulder. Protected bike lanes is one part of that and needs to be paired with other measures that increase our safety when we are out and about. So we can walk more places, bike more places, and get safer there when we do need to use a car, because there's not a way to get there by biking or walking. Thank you very much.
Paul.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I think the city's done a great job, you know, with bike lanes. And, and they've managed to sort of do a good job of like, a lot of people driving this down, and you know, if you got Broadway, you don't be bothered with bikers there. But if you go up like, it's not always done properly. Like, remember at Folsom there? There was the, around about Valmont, they used to have four lanes there, and they moved it to two to protect the cyclists. And it worked out well, but you know, the local businesses were pissed off. There was a car business there, one of my buddies there. And it's just like, yeah, we got to talk to the local people and make sure there's no more staff who's like that. Thank you.
Yeah, this is critically important. We need more protected bike infrastructure. And this is something that the current council has been working really hard on with the Core Arterial Network program that we've been undergoing for two years, because it's incredibly important for cyclist safety and also for the resilience and climate friendliness of our city going forward. So I have hot news right off the press. We just got a $4 million grant from the Denver Regional Council of Government to get protected bike lanes built on Colorado in the Aurora and Baseline area. Kudos to Nicole, who's on that board. Thanks for that work. So we're moving forward with that. Yay, right? Good news. And while this is in a protected bike lane, I was involved in efforts. We just got a $35 million federal grant to build Bus Rapid Transit to Longmont that includes a regional grade separated bikeway. We just had a cyclist die on the diagonal recently. So these are going to help improve cyclist safety going forward. I'm very excited about that. But before I wrap up, I need to give a shout out to my council colleague, Rachel Friend, who asked that question and who's leaving our council shortly. Let's give her a really big hand for that. All right. Well, glad somebody we know who will get the biggest applause tonight. So well done. Great question, but thank you for your service as well. Moving on to, to our next partner here, we have Tatiana Hernandez with the Community Foundation of Boulder. Tatiana, take it away.
Hello and good evening, tributes. As I have saluted your predecessors, may the odds be ever in your favor. Over the past many years, our greater Boulder County community has experienced opportunities for philanthropy government and our community partners to come together. What role do you see public-private partnerships playing in meeting some of the greatest needs of our community?
All right. We will go with Bob Yates, then Nicole Spear, and then Ryan and Tina.
Thank you for that question, Tatiana. I love asking for money. I'm a really good fundraiser. As a matter of fact, I've picked a few of your pockets here in the room for various causes, like the Museum of Boulder and Outboulder, and the Derry in Chautauqua, all sorts of organizations in town that are deserving of our support. So what role can the city place? That's touch on your question. What's the role for public-private partnership? One of the things I discovered in 2014, when I helped create the Community Culture and Safety Tax, is matches work. If the city says, we'll give a million dollars, if you nonprofit raise a million dollars, oh my gosh, that really generates a lot of giving. We did that in 2014. It was hugely successful. We repeated it in 2017. That was hugely successful. In 2021, we passed another ballot measure. The beneficiaries that have not yet been identified, but when they are, I hope the city matches the generous contributions from the you and the community, so that we can have voluntary contributors, that's you, and involuntary contributors, we call those taxpayers. Thank you.
Nicole.
Yeah. Sorry, I forgot to get my timer started. And I hear that people are having trouble hearing me. So maybe if folks could let me know if this is any better, I'm just going to try moving a little bit closer to my mic.
I'm getting the thumbs up, thumbs up from everyone. So it sounds, sounds great. I always prefer the thumbs up to the middle finger. So great work, everyone.
Always. Oh, I, I share that preference, Jonathan. So I would really love to see us get to a future where people's basic needs do not depend on philanthropy, because that's kind of where we're at right now. We have over 600 individuals every week using our food bank at the Emergency Family Assistance Association. We're seeing record numbers of evictions and requests for basic needs support. I think one of the places of public and private partnerships can kind of come together is really in thinking about how do we redesign some of our systems so we have a living wage, better jobs, and an economy that works for everybody, especially around issues of housing, childcare, and healthcare, which have gone up the most in the past decades. We do not have enough nonprofits to keep up with the need that we're seeing. And I think it's going to take all of us working together to figure out what the solutions are that meet people's basic needs. Thank you.
Let's go with Ryan, then Tina.
I am incredibly grateful for the work at BCF and the trends report that it puts out each year, which has some really good information. This is a huge topic. What, what kind of partnerships do we need? I'd like to talk about families and, and young people. I think for a business, business-ish audience, this is, this is really important for, for a million reasons. Inclusion, I don't know if many folks are acquainted with preschoolers in your own family directly or indirectly, but our preschools are in crisis. Their enrollment is, is a problem even more so than in our public school district. We, we have a crisis of unaffordability that is making it difficult not only for families to live here, but for preschool teachers to live here, which is putting intense pressure on, on the preschools that are still remaining, long wait lists, which is making other families not want to come here in the first place. So that's about affordability. I think it's 9% of families are living below the poverty line. It's around 25K. It's, we have, we have a crisis with these young people. Safety, we have, so after natural causes, suicide and crashes, car crashes are the most likely things to, to kill us in Boulder County, and these are disproportionately.
We're getting a stop sign, so talking about road safety.
Check the notes. Coming in the notes. Thank you.
All right, Tina.
Yeah, just a shout out to the Boulder Community Foundation. As someone who is on the school board, they've done an incredible job raising awareness about the need for all of our students from preschool through high school graduation. And I think that's an important role of the nonprofit community is to gain understanding for the whole community and then give us all an incentive of why we want to pay for a school bond, why we want to do a mill levy override, why we want an early childhood tax. Our nonprofits, from my perspective, have an awareness piece. They also connect us. Our family has volunteered with the homeless shelter. I work for an organization and we hire the Bridge House to do our catering, and we become, have a deeper connection with the people who are looking for help, and then get ourselves connected to their needs so that we can create more system-based ways to get those needs served, as Nicole was saying, that are less arbitrary and more dependable. Thanks.
All right. We're, we're going to go back to Melanie with Downtown Boulder Partnership for your next question.
Great. Thank you. What do you see as some of the biggest challenges and opportunities arising on University Hill with the opening of the hotels and conference centers in terms of connectivity to the downtown district?
All right. We're going to go with council candidates first, where we'll go with Tara, then Waylon, and then Paul, then Erin.
The opportunity of University Hill Commercial District to succeed is, this is our opportunity of a lifetime. We now have, right now, it's not doing that great. I mean, honestly, how many of you go there? Probably not a lot. One of my goals is to have a great University Hill Commercial District. And I think the Hill is going to be, the Hill Hotel is going to be a crucial part. They have opportunities, people who stay there to go left or to go right. How can we push people to go into the district and spend money and to help it thrive? So I think we need to, first of all, make it safer. We do have a problem with, we've talked about homelessness, and I think it's a big problem there, and also property crime as well. It's also, needs to be cleaner. Honestly, trash is a big problem there. How, how they get the money, though, is the big question, and whether or not we can funnel more money to that commercial group is going to be important. Connectivity wise, I would say from the Hill to the hotel, down the path to the downtown is going to be our opportunity of a lifetime. I hope I'm on city council to do something about it.
All right, Waylon.
So I live on University Hill. I recommend everyone go there and check out the businesses and support them. There's some fantastic businesses. There's some fantastic businesses. Cafe Aon is a personal favorite. It's been a problem for years. I think it's emblematic of the lack of relationship or the difficult relationship with CU and Boulder itself. I, I was exasperated the other day when I went out with my puppy and my bicycle over just yards and yards of glass. It's always like that. It's ignored. There's TVs, there's mattresses in the farmer's ditches where the little baby ducks are born. It's ignored. There's potholes, there's fireworks, it's ignored. The hotel, you know, it will connect downtown and the Hill more. It also, even all the neighbors, the adults, are disappointed in its design. It's blocking the views that we hold so dear. But I do welcome that and more connection, and I hope this council can actually pay attention to the Hill. But I feel like we've heard that for many years.
All right. We'll do Erin, then Paul.
Erin. Yeah, we've got to get this right. This is the opportunity of our lifetime for the Hill, right? With the opening of the conference center and the Hill Hotel. And so we have to make sure that that invigorates and revives the, the Hill, but we also need to make sure that those hundreds and hundreds of people who are attending conferences and going, staying at the hotels also have an easy way of getting downtown and patronizing all of our amazing downtown businesses. Currently, there is not a safe connection. You know, going down that hill through the Arboretum, which I have to say is probably the most misnamed place in our city right now, it is not a safe place to go, it's not a pleasant place to go. So we need to do something better. Now, one option would be a gondola, but that's probably prohibitively expensive. But we need better connectivity, so we're currently embarking on a study. And what I'm hoping comes out of this is if you've been on one of the two new bridges up to CU that go from the Creek Path up to the stadium area, those are beautiful and they're really usable, I'm hoping that we can get one of those built so we can give people a really safe and pleasant way of getting downtown from the Hill. Thank you.
Paul?
Yes, I agree. Excuse me. The key thing is, you know, we've got to get rid of the crime, the drugs. We've already discussed this, and we've got to, well, you know, just clean up that area. Because if we don't, then you can build what you like, people will not come. And if they do, they'll stay in their hotels, they won't come down into the, the businesses downtown. I mean, look, look, I mean, Boulder is a foodie kind of place, and it's so good, I think we all enjoy it. But in that area, we've lost the Med, we've lost the Chop House, we've lost the Oscar Blues. What, what can the city do to encourage businesses, you know, to survive and thrive? Well, we've got to think about coming up with solutions. That's all.
All right. Moving on to my next favorite topic. City of Boulder has numerous complicated processes. I'm sure none of you have heard about this before. This includes planning, review, and permitting approval, which can lead to delays in business redevelopment activities. The resulting financial impact on local businesses can be crippling and has forced other businesses to relocate out of town. What steps would you take on Boulder City Council to streamline and improve the City of Boulder planning, review, and permit process? So we'll go with Bob and Erin on that one, on the mayor's side, and we will go with Erin Nyer and Jacques De Calo on the council side. So we'll start with Bob.
Thanks. So the question is, how do we streamline our permitting process so it's easier to build here, whether it's residential or commercial? In my eight years on council, I've received, I counted, I've received over 100,000 emails from you all. Thank you for writing. I tried to write back. And probably one of the most frequent, one of the most frequent things that I hear from people is this very, very difficult bottleneck, especially recently. The city is not immune to a nationwide problem where we have difficulty staffing positions. Businesses across the country are struggling with this. The city is struggling with this. And probably our number-one staffing problem right now in the city is in the planning department. And that is reflected by the fact that it takes a really, really long time to get something through the process and then get a building permit issued. Now, one thing, I can't fix the staffing problem, but one thing that City Council can do is keep its fingers off of projects as they come through. For example, we're going to be considering next week, a week and a half, whether we should call up, that is, is review a project that's already been approved by the planning board. We should not. Thank you.
So I get this complaint all the time. The city's permitting process can be Byzantine, it can be slow. Who here has tried to get a permit from the City of Boulder? I see the frustration in your eyes from here, and it's something that we need to do better on because it slows things down. It prevents people from just building a deck, you know? This is something that we need to do better, and it is something that is something that we are gradually making progress on. Our staffing issues are getting better, thank goodness. The timelines are coming down. But the midterm retreat last year for the council, I said to the planning department, would you look at all of your rules and regulations, and if you find bottlenecks, come back to City Council and tell us about those, and we can pass ordinances to clear up those bottlenecks for you. And I asked my colleagues, would people support that? And we got unanimous support. And I'm happy to say that the city planning staff has already brought us back a couple sets of tweaks that are removing roadblocks. And I was just talking to our planning director, Brad Mueller, he said another set is coming back in January. So we have a new commission to them to make progress on this, and I know we will. Thank you.
I'm really glad to hear that, Erin. Yeah, it's good to hear the roadblocks are getting cleared up. I have a lot of relationships with, with small business owners, and like, one of the things I heard is, it can take 400 days to get a permit for a drywall job. And this is a huge issue for local businesses growing in Boulder, because a global or like transnational or national corporation can afford to wait 400 days for their business open. A local, small business cannot. And so these inefficient processes are stopping local businesses, stopping us from growing wealth in the community, and it's keeping our wealth continuing to go out to these like national corporations, and that needs to change. So I think one thing is we need to adjust, adjust the processes such that if it's tiny things like a drywall job, that should not have to go through this really long process. Those should be expedited because it can just be like a quick, yes, yes, yes. The other thing is, if we need to increase staffing to address bottlenecks, we should be able to do that efficiently. But I think the biggest thing is we need to use technology better so we can automate away a lot of the processes so that humans can do what the humans are really good at doing without having to do a lot of stuff that could be automated. Thank you.
Jacques?
Yeah, thank you. It's hard to say things that haven't already been said by the three other people who've spoken before me, but the key things are that we need to focus on small businesses. These are the people that are getting affected the most. Delaying these permits can penalize these small businesses that will deal with uncompensated expenses from this. They're already dealing with small margins, so we need to continue to support them. A community example that I'm sure most of us are familiar with is Fresh Times, where this business had a restaurant and a couple other fronts, and they were unable to continue with their businesses because of permitting delays. We need to increase access for assistance with these programs so that small businesses are guided and given the proper tools to succeed. Happy to hear what Erin said, that we are increasing staffing to make this more available for our community. We need to streamline what can be streamlined. It's important that we maintain a sense of quality with our decisions. We don't want more money for these large corporations and developers. We want to keep the money with our small community, small business owners. Thank you.
Next up is from our Human Services Alliance, so I'll be reading for them. Many business sectors are grappling with a current labor shortage, including the human services sector. What are your concerns about this labor shortage now and in the coming, and in the coming years? What ideas do you have for how we might address it in a way that supports and maintains a diverse community of employees? We'll do council candidates, Taisha Adams and Jennifer Robbins, and then we will go to Paul and Nicole. So let's start with Taisha.
Thank you. I got two W's for you. Wages and working conditions. These two areas continue to be deplorable for many. We have seen an exodus, as with the pandemic, and people are still struggling to make it back in because of wages and working conditions. We have families, people who have multiple jobs who can still not afford childcare, wages, and working conditions. We have discriminatory working conditions that make it difficult and challenging for many to stay in, in jobs that may have wages that are there, but the working conditions are not there. We have increased air quality issues for those of us, for those who are working in out, in the outdoors. We have increased heat issues. We have issues after issue after issue, and with each issue, we have opportunity and we have precedence of meeting grand challenges together. This is not our first time. It won't be our last. Let's do it together. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Okay. I think that overall, people want to work for companies that have good work-life balance, that pay money and have a positive company culture. I think a lot of that has to do with small business. That then goes back to our permitting process. I think we need to try to open more small businesses in this town. My husband has a small business, and throughout, he has not lost an employee in six years. They kept fully staffed through COVID. Boulder's the kind of place where people want to come and live and work, because you can call your employer and say, "I'm going to do an Ironman in Nepal, and I'll be back in a month." And they say, "Great, send pictures," you know? That's, I'm from Chicago, you couldn't do that there. So people want to work here, they want to work for small businesses here, they want, they want a good company culture. With that in mind, I also think as far as the Human Services Department goes, and this is something I struggle with all the time, but I think that people right now are having, we're having an empathy issue as a culture, and it's hard to find nurses, it's hard to find healthcare workers and social workers in today's climate. And so we need to start teaching our kids more about empathy in order to get them into the jobs that we need.
I'm told the other difference between Chicago and Boulder is when we talk about the bears here, they're actually bears. So, all right. Well, we'll go with Paul, then Nicole. Correct.
Yeah, you need to reward people that do a good job, you know? Just like, you know, you've got to reward competence, competency. But that's not always possible because, you know, it's fine in a boom period, but you know, it looks as if the nation's going into recession. So what can we do if we can't just throw money at the problem and hire the best guys or retain the best guys? One way you can retain the best guys is just like, you got them and you pat them on the back and you say, "Bob, you're doing a great job. I've got no money to give you, but you're doing a great job."
Right. And Nicole?
Thank you. I so love this question. My biggest concern is that it's not going to get better and will actually get a whole lot worse without active intervention. As Erin mentioned, I'm on the Denver Regional Council of Governments, which has council members and county commissioners from all across the front range. Lately, we've been talking a lot about our rapidly aging population in Colorado. Over the next 20 to 30 years, we are going to see people over the age of 65 grow at a rate that is seven times bigger than the people under 65. So what is currently an issue with attracting workers to our community is going to get a whole lot worse. One of the things that I would love to see us look at is what we can do to support immigrants in our community. My mom is an immigrant. I have a great appreciation for the role of immigrants in supporting our businesses. I think as we work on what we can do to help people move here, come here, live here, and get the documentation that they need to stay here, we're going to help our workforce as well. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to the Boulder Latino Chamber of Commerce now. Feel free to go with your question, Jonathan.
Thank you. What initiatives do you have in mind to reduce barriers for Latino entrepreneurs to access resources, funding, and business development opportunities?
All right. And for this one, for our mayoral candidates, we'll do Nicole and Paul. And for council, we'll do Taisha and Terry. So let's start with, oh, we'll go in alphabetical order with Taisha first.
Okay. So for this question, one, I am a small business owner and a member of the chamber. I have benefited from the Equity Amplification Program that is offered. We have a monthly lunch, and it's been great for camaraderie, for peer-to-peer support, as well as for partnership. And I would love to see that kind of program expanded to include all those from marginalized communities. I also am the granddaughter of Theodore Adams, who was instrumental in putting minority into the small business program. And Unified Industries was one of the first companies to successfully graduate from that program. Only 2% of all of the companies that were involved in that program, though, were successful. So even though we were able to reduce those barriers, others continue to emerge. So it's not just what can we do, it's also how do we hold accountability and transparency around the opportunities, even the incredible historic investments, ensuring that we get every dime of IRA. Thank you.
Promoting diversity and equity in our community is so critical, and we do a pretty good job, but we can always do better. Specifically to our Latino community, I think that we need to just make extra sure that all of our grant applications and any kind of programs that we're offering are offered bilingually. I think we should be offering periodic sessions with, with the council and with community to really understand in Spanish what opportunities are available to the community so that we can ensure that we're capturing a full breadth of the community. And then I think we also just need to really make sure that we are using all of our equity tools and promoting as much as possible any procurement and contracting opportunities that we can to the Latino community to give as many opportunities as possible. Thank you.
We'll do Paul, then Nicole.
Thank you. That's a hard one. You know, Spanish people, English people don't like filling out forms, especially like submitting them to city to get something, you know, something's not right, you know, and they just want to check up on it, they've got a problem. I would encourage people in decision-making positions in the city to learn Spanish. So, you know, someone calls you up, you know, "Habla español? Sí? Sí? Okay. Oh, no, that's a mistake. It's okay, I'll take care of it. Buenos dias. Benito, benito.
And Nicole?
Yo, mi respuesta aquí es similar a mi respuesta anterior. My response here is similar to my previous response. I really think this comes to partnerships with folks in the Latino community, especially within the Latino chamber, who is already doing a lot of work around reducing the barriers to Latino entrepreneurs in terms of accessing resources, funding, and business development opportunities. I would really like to see us partnering with the Latino chamber as a city to understand what, what, what can we do to provide more support for these networking opportunities? What funding can we provide? Can we provide resources in terms of navigators or folks who can help streamline the application process within the city for some business redevelopment and businesses and, and things like that? And I started my timer late, so I think I am just about out of time, and I can't see the screen, but I'm just really, I think, I think it's partnerships with the folks who are already there doing this work. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. People are there.
All right. We got you. All right. So next up, we have Rachel with the Community Cycles question.
Okay, thanks, Jonathan. Number two, off-street parking requirements for private development, both residential and commercial, increase traffic, drive-up housing costs, and exacerbate stormwater runoff and the heat island effect. Do you support changes to our land use code that would reduce or eliminate off-street parking mandates?
All right. We'll take this one with Jacques and Wayland, and then Bob Yates and Erin Brockett. So Jacques, if you want to take it away.
I would not eliminate off-street parking because there's plenty of existing vehicles, and people need places for these vehicles. However, I would look into alternatives, specifically alternative transportation, increasing access to multimodal transportation, and ensuring that people who choose to live without cars are able to get around. I think as we continue to look into sustainable, sustainable development, we could possibly make exceptions to the requirements for parking. I believe that making this exception would allow for higher density in these areas, as well as push for people to be more sustainable with their transportation. These developments would be optimal for affordable housing options. These developments would be optimal for affordable housing options as it could reduce costs for people who choose to live without vehicles. I appreciate the question and I think that this is a great driver towards sustainability.
Yeah, everything Jacques said. My friend Brian Bowen, local architect, sent me a podcast on parking. I never thought I'd be sitting around listening to an hour podcast on parking. It's fascinating stuff. The average parking spot costs, adds costs of $30,000 to any development. And we wonder why we can't get affordable housing or even that missing middle, which we should all be concerned about. We want to be able to hire wonderful employees and retain them. If we don't have the housing for them, we need to look at those parking spots a little cynically. There's some great information out there. Climate Town just did an episode on it. You know, I biked here. I don't even use my parking spot at home. It's the kind of thing, if you build it, they will come. We've seen that in Paris. We've seen that around the world. We need to offer safe, which we don't yet have, back to protected bike lanes and more of them and plowing them like they do in Halifax where my mom lives. They plow it like six times a day in the winter and they also use that to plow the sidewalks.
Plowing through, we'll go to Bob then Erin.
This probably requires a few words of explanation. So this typically comes up when somebody's building an apartment building, right? And the city has an archaic rule that tells the builder that they must put a certain number of parking spaces in for that apartment building. Invariably, they don't have enough space. So they come to us and they say, can we please have a waiver? We always say, yes, of course you can have a waiver. I've seen dozens and dozens of these projects over the eight years I've been on council. We always give a waiver. As a matter of fact, every once in a while, a developer will come to us and say, I'm going to give you exactly the number of parking spaces you need. We say, oh, no, 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 make it less, make it less. So we force them into waivers. This is one of the silliest laws the city has, probably dates back to the 1970s. It's a law we need to get rid of. We need to reduce those parking minimums. I'll give you a concrete example. The Millennium Hotel is about to be torn down and what's going to be constructed there is 303 units of student housing. But there's a parking requirement. How many of those kids do you think have cars? I mean, seriously, we need to reduce our, well, maybe some of them do, but not 303. So we need to reduce the parking requirements significantly in this town so we can build more housing. Thank you.
Erin.
Yes, absolutely. We need to reform our outdated parking requirements. As Bob referenced, we do give out parking, we allow lowered parking, like we give out candy on Halloween, which is appropriate because our requirements are too high. I'd like to see us move towards parking maximums like we have in Boulder Junction. I think those can be very successful. It reduces the cost of housing and moves our city in a more sustainable direction, a more climate-friendly direction. And then you pair those with good transportation demand management, things like bike share and car share and scooter access for those of us who are young enough to use those well and any number of other things. I live in the Holiday neighborhood in North Boulder. We have one parking spot per unit up there. It works great and everybody is able to live a car-light lifestyle or car-free if that works for them. So definitely an area to move forward for the cost, for affordable housing and for climate action in our town. Thank you.
I'm glad we got a chance to talk about Halloween a little bit. There will not be a lightning round question on the bringing back the mall crawl, but we'll, we'll see if that comes up later. So next, we'll go to Tatiana with the Community Foundation.
I might be asking a lightning round question right now because the question that we submitted earlier, I think many of you have answered in your previous responses and you are welcome to answer it again if that is what you choose. The question is, as you look at the nonprofit landscape and really in community need, what is your understanding of the most pressing needs in our community? Should you want to approach things differently? I would offer, many members of city council have joined in recent years at times when platforms change due to external forces, COVID, shooting, fires. How do you pivot in moments of crisis? How do you learn? How do you respond? What do you, how do you behave in those situations?
All right. Tough question here. So we'll go to Bob and Nicole first and then Tina and Silas second.
No fair. This question wasn't on the list, but thanks for asking it, Tatiana. We, no, no, that's a great question. We pivot. How do we pivot? We pivot by, we all live in this community. We all live in this community. We're all members of this community. And so when we have something like COVID, we have a crisis and we have a shooting at King Supers. We come together as a community. We hold each other. We listen to each other and then we figure it out. I love about this community is so many of us have come from other places. We brought with us our ideas. We come together with our creativity. And when we face a problem, whether it's a shooting, COVID, homelessness, some of our other challenges, we find the solutions. I don't think this community has ever found a problem that it couldn't solve. Our best days are ahead of us. Let's go to that together. Thanks.
All right. Nicole.
Yo, thank you, Tatiana, for this question as well. I love this question. It's one of the most central things that we do as city leaders. How do you pivot in moments of crisis? For me, I lean on the relationships that I have in the community, the relationships that I have with staff and with others who are critical to addressing whatever the crisis is that's come up. One of the things that's critical for this is having built relationships. You can't just kind of go and get a relationship in a moment of crisis that didn't already have some basis before. One of the things that I've done last year when we knew that Roe was about to fall and women were about to lose their rights to reproductive freedom and that LGBTQ rights were also going to be on the line, having relationships with groups in the community that are providing reproductive healthcare, providing support services to our LGBTQ community really enabled me to get out there and talk to folks and try to understand what could we change about our city's legislative policy agenda so that we could provide more protections for folks in our community. I think that it's just critical to have those relationships. Thank you.
All right. Now we've got Tina and Silas.
Yeah, I was on the school board during the COVID pandemic. I happened to be president. It was a great experience. We, but the pivoting was really all about redefining the problem and leaning and supporting our staff to help deliver and help support the community that we serve. During that experience, I was amazed day after day after day about what our staff in the school district was able to do in terms of providing food to low-income families who all of a sudden had less access to food because of a lack of school lunches, creating temporary internet services so students could access online learning, creating mental health resources for teachers who are struggling, and also creating all of the Chromebook distribution. All of a sudden, we all had to be very technologically savvy. And I think it took a community that supported. Our job wasn't to question everything, but to offer our leadership to the staff and that's it. Thanks.
Thank you for that on-the-fly question. I actually appreciate it because for me, we shouldn't need to pivot. What we need to do is we need to build resilience on all fronts, climate resilience, housing resilience, basic income resilience, to have the supports that we need, mental health supports, all the pieces that we're currently missing. That means when we have these things occur, we have to pivot. That's the wrong approach. It's very reactive and we need to be much more proactive to ensure that everybody has what they need. I'm all about making sure that everyone gets what they need so we can come together as a community and enjoy time with each other. And so resilience is going to be the way to do that. We have to look at that. As we said earlier, then nonprofits cannot keep up with a need. So let's build the systems that we need to so that is not needed and we can have that resilience we need every day. Thank you.
All right. So I believe, does that conclude our partner questions for everybody? So we've got, I'm going to do a little Coach Prime thing here and call an audible on this one. I know we've been giving just a smattering of candidates an opportunity to respond to the questions and that's partially to be a little bit of a teaser for what we're going to be doing to put up on the website to give all of you a chance to have your answers as you wrote them. But with that being said, there was a recent city council decision at a study session on the minimum wage. I'm going to want everyone to answer this question. We're going to go in reverse alphabetical order on this one, but I'm going to want everyone to answer this one. The consortium of cities outlined an engagement process to discuss a regional minimum wage with an increase potentially happening January 1 of 2025. County commissioners then announced their intention to raise the minimum wage in the unincorporated parts of the county by the end of this year. What actions would you take or would you have taken as a mayoral candidate, as a city council candidate, or as a current sitting elected official on this issue of raising the minimum wage? Once again, we're going to go in reverse alphabetical order on this one. We're going to start with, with Bob and move our way backwards.
First of all, we do need to raise our minimum wage. There's no question about that. The question is when? So back on May 25th, the city of Boulder decided in partnership with Louisville, Lafayette, Longmont, and Boulder County that we would target that change in minimum wage for January 1, 2025. That would give nonprofits and small businesses plenty of time to plan, about a year and a half. That was on May 25th. A few weeks ago, the Boulder County Commissioners changed their mind. They said, I know we said 2025, but what we really meant was January 1, 2024, four months from now. So that came back to city council last week and we were asked the question, do we want to go, do we want to accelerate things? And on a five to four vote, we said, no. Consistency is important in government. When we tell you something, when we promise something to you, we need to follow through on it. And a five to four vote, barely, we said, you know what? What we promised you in May, we're going to stick with. It's going to be January 1, 2025.
Minimum wage. So I didn't know a lot about it. I was reading from The Economist, maybe you've heard him, Thomas Sowell. I think he's a Harvard economist, professor or emeritus now. He's getting older, but he's still great when you see him interviewed. But he was talking, when he was young, he'd work in a cinema. You know, he was just a young boy there. But his job was to, you know, guide people. It was a dark cinema and he'd guide them to their seats. And he'd get like, I don't know, five cents an hour or something like that. And he was explaining that if you raise the minimum wage to say 20 cents an hour, that job disappears. That job disappears. So now you don't have anyone leading you to your seats. Is that a good thing? You want to thank God for all about it. Thank you.
We'll go to Nicole, Nicole then Erin.
Thanks for this question. My colleague Lauren Fulkerts has been leading this effort for the city with staff for over a year and I am very supportive of the process that they're working on to get our whole region to a place similar to where Denver is and to where the county commissioners are intending to go. They'll be identifying a target minimum wage, a path to get there as quickly as possible given state constraints on when and how much we can raise the minimum wage, and then putting in place a wage escalator that will create a lot of predictability for workers and businesses. This process will be inclusive of workers, of labor, of human services agencies, nonprofits, and the business community, especially the small business community. I was in the minority on council that supported following the county and putting in place a faster increase in the minimum wage that would have gone into effect January 1, 2024 because the landscape had changed since May. We heard from so many services agencies and families who are struggling and continuing to see record levels of need, the longer we wait to help the people struggling the most, the worse our economic crisis is going to get. Thank you.
So back at that May meeting that Bob referenced, I was the council member at that time who said, let's move forward a little more quickly on this. And the reason for that is because people are suffering, y'all. Like the folks at the bottom end of the income spectrum, they can't make ends meet. And we hear this from our human services providers every day. EFA has warned us about this and has really lobbied us strong and hard on this, as have other members of the Human Service Alliance. There are people out there that need help with this at meeting their rent and their food needs. So back in May, I said, hey, we could do a modest increase this year while we work with the consortium on what the final number might be as part of this collaboration. And so when this came back to us a week and a half ago, I stayed consistent and I said, I still think we need to help the folks who are absolutely struggling in the community with a modest this-year increase and then work with the consortium to determine the path forward. And I feel like that was a good path, but I'm still glad that we are working with the consortium. We'll work for the next year with all the small businesses, the larger businesses in the community to determine what the eventual path will be. And I look forward to that collaboration. Thank you.
I'm going to give you a behind-the-scenes at city council right now so you can hear the down low. That day was literally the worst day in my two years. First of all, I've been talking about for two years how our minimum wage is so ridiculously low that it's embarrassing. I was sick on that day in May when our city council, except for Erin, decided that we were going to wait till 2025. That was just in May. And now it's back. It's the end of August. We're giving everybody three months and they want us to change our mind, which cities shouldn't do. And I had to vote to wait till 2025. Do you know what? People are suffering and they are struggling. So what did I do? What's worse, throwing myself under the bus that I did something that I was really against because I wanted to help people versus keeping a promise that our city gave to our regional partners? We promised them 2025. We promised the businesses 2025. And now at the last minute, we're going to change our minds. So either way, it was a lose-lose for me and I'm sorry for everybody that I disappointed, to be honest.
All right. So we'll move on. Move on to Ryan.
Well, I, I've heard that the council job is tough. People keep saying, thanks for your service. And I watched, I don't know who watched the session on Thursday, but I, this was tough. This was agonizing. I know this is literally one of the hardest things many of these council members have had to deal with. The decision has been made. We are moving forward. I think, I think the question now is, what do we do? So we have a, we have a council of municipalities process. We have a county process. We need to continue to coordinate and move this forward and try to figure out how much we can do with the greatest, the greatest speed that works the best for everybody. But we need to more broadly think about what is causing us to be in this scarcity situation in which people, people, we have one of the most unaffordable places to live in the whole state. We need to have minimum wage at least at the level of Denver. But we have, we have other tools we need to use to make sure that people can live and use transportation affordably and beyond. So this is one of the biggest issues we need to figure out.
I do also support the minimum wage increase. I think it's a moral issue. People are suffering as you've heard and I do agree with that. With that in mind, though, I do think that we need to keep our partner approach moving forward. The regional alliance is very important and we have to provide our businesses and the cities time to prepare for this increase, which we have told them is January of 2025. So I agree that we should increase minimum wage, but I do believe that we should do it in January of 2025.
I'd say a healthy system involves both consistency and change. So should council be consistent? Yes. Should council occasionally change their mind when the context calls for it? Yes. In this case, I think I would have supported, supported the move to accelerate it a bit, provided there were, that it was a moderate increase. I don't know the specifics, like hopping to $25 an hour in January 1, 2024 would not be effective. I've talked to a friend of mine who's a small business owner. He would have probably gone bankrupt. But if we're doing something like this and we can either do it at a moderate rate that allows people to prepare appropriately or create other safeguards that have subsidies for small local businesses for whom this is excessively challenging, then I think something like that is good. But I also, yeah, think the most important thing is we do need to have something changing to allow those who are most struggling to move. So we have to be able to balance those and that's a challenging thing. But I'm glad that people in city council are considering it. It feels like there's healthy conversation being had.
Yeah, I don't envy the city council for having to make that decision between consistency and helping people who are struggling. And one of the things that I think is really important is how this, this regional consortium works together and whether this becomes a model for solving some of the other problems that are more regional. And I think a lot about the homeless situation we have and that it's really a regional issue. And can we inject more into this conversation to help people who need more supports in our community and build on this collaborative effort to do even more to help?
Yeah, this is a tough one and as it should, it falls to the city council. The city council should really only tackle things that are tough, issues that can't be resolved elsewhere. I grew up here. My mom... My mom never made more than $12,000 a year back then and worked two jobs. I saw her crying at Christmas when she couldn't afford presents. We lived on popcorn and rice some months. There's a phrase, you know, the best time to change your mind on a wrong decision, something like that, is now. It may be uncomfortable, but I probably would have supported increasing the minimum wage. It's too low. That said, I am friends with Dave Query, Pete of Tiaco. I know margins are tight, and I do support, you know, this is tough because I'm not on council now, but I do support working with the business community. If we break the backs of business with tight margins, that's not good for employees either. We need to retain employees, especially with the tough commute for so many of them with unaffordable housing. And one way to do that is to increase the minimum wage. Thank you.
As a working member of our society, I understand that we need to increase wages. Minimum wage is not kept up with inflation. People are feeling the burden, not in our city, not in our state, but across the country. We need to focus on the small businesses that'll feel the impact from the increase on wage. I believe that while it is a dire need, taking the proper time to implement measures that'll protect small businesses and small business owners is very critical. We also need to focus on housing. Housing is a critical component of this to bring in affordability, and making permanently affordable housing available for our working members in our community is critical. We need to understand that larger businesses are not going to feel the pressure of this. And I've seen a lot of small businesses in Boulder, on the Pearl Street area, being moved out of Boulder because of unaffordable rent and the increase in wage and just other things that have affected their margins. So we really need to focus our energy on providing for these businesses.
I 100% support the increase in minimum wage, and I'm really glad that we have it approved for 1125. And had we been talking about changing it on 1124 back in January timeframe, that would have been really amazing. But we weren't. And as a person that runs the finance department for businesses, this is going to have a really meaningful impact on our small businesses and their bottom line. And asking them in the last four months to all of a sudden pivot and revamp their budgets and really try to take this impact on such short notice is unfair, and it's not in keeping with the commitments that we made to that community. So I think we have to follow through on those commitments and really push at this point to make sure that we execute on the best possible policy that we can. Thanks.
Thank you for this question. I've heard several people say people are suffering. I'm those people. I struggle to pay my rent every month. I've used the city's rent assistance program last year, and I can't use it again until December. So every month, I have to look at how I'm going to pay my rent, how I'm going to pay my bills to get to where I need to work. My wage is averaging out to about minimum wage when you look at an entire year. Even though the city, even though the school district pays a higher hourly wage, because I'm only paid when students are in session, I'm basically making minimum wage. This is something that we need to change yesterday. So I'm sorry that we committed to something, we need to pivot, but we need to pivot now. Now, when it comes to small businesses, I know there's a real concern about that. Denver did this in 2022, and has actually seen an improvement in things by doing this. When we have money to spend on things other than basic needs, guess where we can go? To your small businesses and buy your products. Thank you.
The fight for 15 started in 2012. I'm reminded of James Baldwin's quote about how long do we have to wait for progress? He waited his father's time, his uncle's time, his sister's times, his cousin's time. I've also waited that long, intergenerationally as well. The time is now. I'm also a small business owner, however, so I understand the complexity of the question being asked. And I know that there are more solutions than are what is, blah, 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 blah. I know, thank you. I know that there are more solutions than what is currently being discussed. Between the climate tax, which can support both businesses and families with housing, as well as the IRA, there are federal and state and local investments that we have not taken advantage of, we have not sufficiently talked about, and we are not positioned to access. So it is essential that we position our businesses and our families and our individual communities who live, work, and play here to be able to access every dime that we have available. Thank you.
I will not be answering that question about the minimum wage, but I am going to hold the mic for a second. So in the interest of equal time, there were four council candidates that did not get an equal number of questions. So Tara, Ryan, Jennifer, Erin, Nair. I'm going to give you, each four of you, the opportunity to answer any one of the four questions that you were not asked in the interest of equal time. So if there was a question from the Realtors, from Downtown Boulder Partnership, Community Cycles, probably don't want to talk about minimum wage because you just talked about it, whatever those were, I want to give you the opportunity to respond in the interest of equal time so we make sure that all of our council candidates have been given the same opportunity. So I'm going to go in alphabetical order by first name.
No.
I'm speaking slowly here. Alphabetical, or if you'd like to add on to one of your comments, we'll give you one minute, just like everybody else. But Erin, I'm going to walk over slowly.
So the question I'm going to answer was the second Community Cycles question about off-street parking. Because I think this is like a really important issue and a really nuanced issue. I was glad to hear both, I think, Bob and Erin speak on that and fill in more information because it does need to change. I'm glad that the city is already doing the waivers to like address that. But the amount of parking mandates that we currently have, right now, we have all of this asphalt everywhere, which is not good for the climate, like massive heat sink. It's taking up space that we could be using for housing. And so I think it's important for Boulder to transition to a less car-dependent city. And we have to recognize that we're like embedded in an extremely car-dependent society, and so we can't just expect people to go away from cars. And so it's not fair to say we're going to take cars away from people. But I do think it's important for us to begin to take steps, doing things like decoupling rent and parking, doing things like increasing our public transportation, and making it more possible for people to have cars and making it more of a conscious choice for people to have cars so we can begin to move in that direction. Thank you.
All right. Off to Jennifer.
I can't decide whether to go for the environment or crime. Two very different things. I think I'll, I think I'll talk about crime. I know that public safety is a real issue for a lot of people in Boulder right now. And in general, we have been, we can look at public safety from the direction of fires and floods, but public safety right now, I think, for people in Boulder is something a little different, and that is focusing on making sure that your businesses are safe, that you're personally safe when you're walking. I mean, everybody's heard about the stories of break-ins and stabbings and all the terrible things that have happened. And I think that we need to work on getting our community courts, working with our, with our, our community courts, working with our county courts. I think that people need to be held accountable for their actions, and I think that we need to make sure that we are treating people's mental health issues and we're treating people's substance abuse issues on top of it. We have to enforce our camping ban, and we have to support our police. Thanks.
Ryan.
Is it Ryan? Is it me?
Yeah, it is you.
Okay. I think I'm going to take the protected bike lanes question. So December 2021, I got a phone call from council member friend, and she said, we have some work to do. And a lot of people are on vacation. That work was to get the core arterial network, the bike lane system that you've heard about, going. I'm a member of the Transportation Advisory Board. I've been on the board for a couple of years. And it took a small number of people on council and some others to make a serious upgrade to our city's transportation program happen. And that's when I started studying what it looks like to do legislation as a council member and got excited about it. We have to protect this and defend it in the next council. It's easy to say black lanes are great, but this is going to come down to our elected leaders saying, we're going to defend the system, even when people maybe don't like what you're doing with the driveway over here, over there. And as we do that, we have got to build back transit, and we've got to double, triple, and quadruple transit so that we can have buses every quarter mile within the city so that we can take buses to Longmont, to Rocky Mountain National Park, to Brainerd, off to the cities, or the state's bus thing, so that we can actually live and have a bit more abundance with transportation. Thanks.
Tara.
Well, it's not easy to speak for one minute, am I right? It's really hard. So I have, I'm not in the best mood, so I'm going to take the happiest subject, and that's biking, isn't it? E-bikes. So I'm going to talk about protected bike lanes as well. I'm happy that I was a part of the council when we got to do the CAN Core Arterial Network. It was a, you know what? I tore my meniscus like a year ago, and I haven't been able to hike. So all I've been doing is riding around my electric bike, and I can tell you that it's taken my life into my hands sometimes. 19th Street, Iris, the gravel, I fell off my bike recently, so I double-double tore my meniscus. So for me, protected bike lanes are the way to go. First of all, they do everything we want. Getting on your e-bike does everything we want. It lowers our GHG emissions. It helps with VMTs. All the acronyms happen when it comes to biking, I tell you. And so that's why, that's my happiest place, is to be on my e-bike, for others to get on their e-bikes, and really enjoy, in this world that has so many problems, a little bit of enjoyment on our e-bikes. And that's how I'm ending.
Well, next up for lightning round, we're just going to ask you all the acronyms on city council. So I have ADD. It's Acronym Deficiency Disorder. And I want to thank all of the council candidates, first of all, for not using acronyms their entire time. I think it is an exclusive language, and you've done a wonderful job of keeping it inclusive. With that being said, before we ask our candidates to give their final statements today, which, by the way, you've been so efficient with your time, a few of you balked at 30 seconds. We're going to give you a minute each to wrap up. We're going to give you a minute each to, I know, we've got some booze there. But maybe we'll move to 30 seconds again. But with that being said, we are going to, I'm going to hand the mic over to our president and CEO, John Tayer.
So I'm going to be very, very quick, less than 30 seconds. So you'll see a lot of Boulder Chamber folks wearing their "why" button. Why, not a question, why, exclamation point. Why do we talk about why? Why is that we are emphatically excited about the opportunities and the work that we do at the Boulder Chamber in supporting community initiatives, supporting our businesses, and continuing this to be the love, the place that we love to live and work. And so I thank all of you, the audience, because obviously you share that why. You share the why of wanting to be educated about the leaders who are going to represent our community. Thank you, Lindsay. I still got 30 seconds. To support our community, I want to thank our Boulder Chamber staff team for pulling this together, as well as our partners all listed up here, for being partners with us in vetting these candidates and supporting the education that our citizens need. And ultimately, I want to thank the candidates. It is such a difficult job to run for council. We put you in embar-
Cut it out! Give me a break!
It is such a difficult job to run for city council. You put yourselves out there, you're putting yourselves out there for a purpose. It's the why. It's because you want to support and make sure that this community moves forward in a positive direction. Thank you all for your service as council candidates.
So with that in mind, haven't Lindsay and Darcy done a phenomenal job tonight? I know, they haven't given me the bell once, but, but, that was your prompt. Anyway, so that being said, I don't want to forget one more time. Elevations Credit Union, thank you for being the sponsor of this event. Latino Chamber, Community Cycles, Downtown Boulder Partnership, Bolo Realtors, Community Foundation of Boulder, and the Human Services Alliance, thank you for your wonderful questions. And now to our candidates. This is the end of this road, but the beginning of a big travel for all of you. Thank you for your comity and your comedy tonight. We live in contentious times, and all of you have strongly-held beliefs. That comes through so well. But also, the mutual respect I've seen on this stage is something that I hope we see plays out in the audience with your electorate and moving forward here, because this is the kind of conversations that we need to have. Tough, honest conversations, but doing so in a way that evokes understanding. So thank you for your tough comments and your understanding tonight. Now to the audience. Yeah, you can clap for that one, too. But to the audience, to the audience, thank you for taking the time to listen tonight. I know that there are more questions out there than there are hours in the day. I'm sure our candidates will stick around for a few more minutes before they make their concluding remarks. But give yourselves a round of applause for showing up tonight. With that, we are going to wrap up, and I think, given the audience response, I feel like they kind of wanted the 30-second version and not the one-minute version. We're going to go in reverse alphabetical order because I haven't made way to this end of the stage yet, and we'll take it with council member Yates.
Leadership matters. Four years ago, I was up on the stage running for reelection to city council. You gave me another four years, and thank you very much for that. As you decide how you will choose Boulder's first directly-elected mayor, ask yourself if I've been a good leader. Have I listened to you? Have I responded to you? Have I made wise decisions? If the answer is yes, please select me as your mayor. Leadership does matter.
Like Erin here, I'm a software engineer. We're practical guys, right? And if elected, we'll bring our practical intellect. It's going to work. It's going to work efficiently, and it's going to be safe. Now I'm a gardener, and I think you can tell a lot about a man, how he tends his garden. So I invite you to come up to my place in Fourth Street, and I'd be delighted to give you a tour. Thank you.
Nicole.
Thank you. My vision of Boulder's future is a vibrant, sustainable, resilient city where people can't wait to live and work, where future generations will look back at us with gratitude, knowing that we used the enormous climate, economic, and social challenges of the early 2020s to set them up for success. We won't get there overnight, but knowing so many of you, I know we'll get there. If you want to learn more about what I've done with my two years on council and how I can help us move forward together as mayor, please look for my full responses on the chamber's website or visit my website to learn more, nicoleforforboulder.com. Thank you.
All right. We are fortunate to live in one of the very best places in the entire world, but we have big problems that we cannot shy away from. We have to make progress on affordable housing. We need better homeless solutions. We need more solutions for people experiencing mental health and substance abuse problems. We need to improve our public safety in our town, and we have to take rapid action on climate. But we can do this, and with your support and with all of us working together, I know that Boulder can and will become the just, equitable, and inclusive city that it deserves to be. Thank you.
You know, we have so many problems, and city council can't solve all of them. In fact, I'm happy that I can say that I solved some problems. I did some good. I made some people's lives better in the past two years. What I loved the most about city council was the phone calls. And so I'm going to give you my phone number right now. Write it down. I got to look it up here again. 303-912-5960. And why I'm giving you this phone number is because frankly, in one minute, nobody can really say what they think. But I hope that you all call me up and tell me all your thoughts and dreams and how you think we could have a better city. Enough of that.
Okay, so affordability, safety, and inclusion, that's what I want to work on to help make Boulder stronger. And I'd like to tell you more about that, but I think to close, I would just like to thank you as the business community. I mentioned I grew up in a small business. This was, it's a retail store business. I worked graveyard shifts. My parents' businesses were on the front lines of every, a lot of things in the community. About 50 years later, they're in the process, pretty soon, of winding it down, which I'm helping them to do. And I know that in Boulder, we have about 84 businesses, 8,400 businesses, 90% of which are under 20 persons, 97% are under 50, and you're doing incredible work.
All right.
And I look forward to working with you more. I have more to say, but to be continued. which are under 20 persons, 97% are under 50, and you're doing incredible work. And I look forward to working with you more. I have more to say, but to be continued.
Okay, 30 seconds. I think we need to consider the environment in every decision that council makes. I think we need to subsidize recovery and not enable addiction. I think we need to create more affordable housing. We need to hold people accountable for their actions, support youth and family services, be mindful of every dollar that we spend here in the city. I come from the perspective that I think everybody has something valuable to bring to every conversation. I'm a fantastic listener, and I really hope we can make Boulder all that it should be. Thanks.
How blessed are we, y'all? We have an amazing populace that's super engaged and that cares. We have a really quality council that really cares and is working diligently on all issues. And we have some amazing candidates, all amazing candidates, who really care and are working. I'd be honored to serve as part of this council. I have a knowledge and passion for sustainability, regeneration, ecology. It's going to help me address the climate crisis on a local level, a knowledge and passion for technology to bring forward innovation, and a knowledge and passion for community and connection that is going to really help us work together on how we address this. So I hope you, yeah, thank you so much. And I hope you-
Hi. In the last 20 years that I've been living here, I've been volunteering throughout the community and also serving on school board. And every time I have a conversation with someone, I'm just impressed at how much they care, even if we have completely different ideas on what the solution might be. We share the caring for the community, and we have a shared desire to see people thrive in Boulder. I think we can use that joint caring to get to a place where we can solve our most critical problems and have a thriving, livable, social and, sorry, socially just city. Thank you.
So I was born here, and I had the gift of safe streets. We don't have that right now. I want everyone to have the opportunity to get a great education, have a great childhood here, or if we're already working, to have those safe streets and foster a wonderful business. I'm excited with the deep roots I have in this community to work in a coalition with these amazing public servants, and I'm proud to have a chamber here that cares about our values in common. Thank you.
The things I love about Boulder are our amazing open space system that's allowed all of us to connect with nature. I love our vibrant Pearl Street Mall and business areas that give us quality restaurants and incredible entertainment. I love that there's so many family businesses and small businesses in Boulder that keeps us unique and keeps us diverse. As someone who was born and raised here and seen the changes over the last 20-some years, I bring a perspective as a young person in politics and also as a local. I believe that I will include full sustainability and reducing our carbon footprint with every decision I make. Thank you.
This election is so important. We are at a critical inflection point, and the leaders over the next few years are really going to decide the direction that our community heads. Everybody up here shares a vision of a Boulder that's inclusive and safe and vibrant and wonderful, but we have different opinions on how to pursue those solutions. I am concerned about the path that Boulder is on, and I think we need a change of leadership to get back on track. We need disciplined leaders that will prioritize, oh, dang it! Vote for me!
I'd like to close by saying that we need our basic needs met. I talked earlier about when we have money available, we can support all these wonderful businesses. I love eating downtown and other areas of the city. I want to do that more. We need to have the safety that comes with that as well, and that means safety for everybody. I want safety for every single person in this city. I want us to get housing for everybody, wages for everybody, transportation for everybody, climate resilience for everybody, and arts and culture for everybody. Thank you.
A vote for me is a vote for a just, joyous community that is climate and culturally resilient. How do we get there? One step at a time. I'm courageous. That's going to be essential in moving us forward. I'm not afraid to ask the question. I'm not afraid to try new things. I'm not afraid to ask and demand for what we had already, already had agreed upon. I'm also compassionate. I'm compassionate, recognizing, oh, and you'll find out more at adamsforboulder.com. Whoa!
So, in the business, in the business community, we ask people what their elevator pitch is, but because of the height limit, the elevator pitch has to be that much shorter in Boulder, so you all really crossed the threshold here. That was a deep cut, I know. So with that being said, one more round of applause for our candidates. And I know, I know that our candidates, I know our candidates would love to come up and speak with you. Before that, though, David, why don't you come up? We're going to do a group picture. And don't worry, the rest of the audience doesn't need to be in it, but please feel free to enjoy the rest of the refreshments that we have. And David, feel free to come on up here. We're going to do a group photo. Could we have half of the council members sit in chairs in the front row? Short in the front? All right, all right, you got to make room for Nicole, folks. Nicole.